Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Being 6:30, we'll start the Thursday, December 1st, 2022, meeting of the Westminster Select Board. Before we get going on this agenda, I'd like to introduce the new Town Manager, Town Westminster, Mr. Ken Fay. Started a couple of days ago. Still here, that's a good sign. We'll move on. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Chair, I'd like to, since we have some special guests tonight, I'd like to move the Conflict of Interest Adoption Policy, which will be, take some time for us this evening. Just move that down the list into the new business discussion and move the Waste Management Discussion up as priority so our guests can get to where they're going, know they're busy and they've got stuff to do. Also, Mr. Chair, at this point, I'd also like to move the Executive Session up to D to go into Executive Session and make a motion to do so, discuss the Citizen of the Year and dedication of the Town Report.
I'll second it. Okay, motions been made and seconded to move--
Recording stopped.
Sorry, you said not to do it too loud. Of course.
Recording in progress.
Uh, motions been made and seconded to move Waste Management Discussion to the top of the list and move Conflict of Interest down as well as enter an Executive Session with the Manager for the Citizen of the Year Dedication Town Report.
With the Manager, sorry.
Okay, with the Manager. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Moving on, we'll go Acceptance of the Minutes, November 9th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with a correction. It says that Richard Parker from the Planning Commission was there, but it was Richard Quarker.
Okay.
So, motion to accept with correction.
Okay, seconded. Uh, motions are made and seconded to accept the minutes with corrections. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Communications and Public Comments. See none, we'll move on to what is now Waste Management Discussion.
Okay, well, thanks for inviting us. John Fay is our Programs Manager. Are you guys related? So, uh, it's great to have the new Town Manager here tonight. And also Joe, who you guys all know, we're all partners in this crazy business, recycling, solid waste hauling, composting, and all the regulatory requirements the state throws at us. So, um, when we sent out our assessment and annual budget, I said in my cover email, hey, any select boards want to have us come by? And Kevin took us up on it. As you know, Kevin is our rep and has been, he's been participating in almost every meeting. And he follows on Russ Hodgkins several years, I think three years. Russ was really active, was on the Finance Committee, contributed a lot. He came in a little, you know, questioning, what is this group? You know, we spent a lot of money. And then in the, I think in the end, he thought we were doing a decent job. So, um, and then prior to Russ was Jan Amin. And, um, so Westminster, I pointed out in the letter, and I'm not going to go through everything in here, is our second biggest town. And the voting is apportioned by population. Every 3,000, you get one vote. And you guys have 16 more than 3,000. So, and you have had more than 3,000 for a long time. So, you have two votes. All the other towns except Brattleboro, and they're the host community, they have 12,000 something, and they get extra vote because they host the landfill, it goes way back. Anyhow, um, it's significant if there's any close controversial issue that, and we had that with the closing of the MRF in 2017. So, anyhow, if you do the math, how many votes, you know, five towns, if it's Brattleboro and Westminster and a few others, can carry a majority of the votes. So, I just wanted to say it's, I think it's good you pay attention to what happens down the district. And, um, so we, um, we're really pleased that our district has been so financially stable for the last, really, four years. And we went through a very rough period with the MRF running. We processed dual stream recycling. The world went single stream.
Can you explain what MRF is?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Materials Recycling Facility. That was the plant, I'm sorry.
Gotcha. No, I say--
Come on, MRF.
Why wouldn't I know?
No, no, no. And, um, and I don't know how many of you knew we had a facility for 20-some years. I've been there 10 years, so I wasn't involved with the early operations. But we processed bottles and cans. You had your drop off here, all the towns did. We hauled them. We provided a very visible service. And that was part of your membership. So, we closed the MRF and we took away the containers. And I was like, so what do we get? You know? That was the visible part. And Craig's been through all this. He remembers all this. And, um, so anyway, we've tried to show the value, and it is real, to the member towns and by expanding into a lot of other areas. And that's what we outlined here. And I think maybe the best thing is we just open it up for discussion because I think most of you saw this, instead of walking through all the paragraphs. But we're prepared to answer questions or go through it in detail. And John, feel free to say, if you-- John's got extensive experience with the state, with private consulting, and he's been with us two years. Very fortunate to have John on board.
Yeah, um, just as, we're essentially the Regional Planning Commission for Trash. If the state does require every municipality either have their own plan and do all the requirements required by the Department of Environmental Conservation, or else be part of our larger group, like the Solid Waste District, like us. So, it really relieves the town of a lot of, um, i's to dot and t's to cross and planning to do and programs to put on. We do a lot of outreach. We do household hazardous waste. We host a regional transfer station and the second largest composting facility in the state. So, there's a lot going on down in the district. And we really see Westminster as an important member. And we know not a lot of people use it daily, the transfer station, but the transfer station is only part of what we do. We really have a lot of other planning work that we do.
Well, Joe's company has been bringing food scraps to us through his commercial hauling business. I don't know if you want to comment on that. It's a new, we've developed new business around it.
Yeah, exactly. And it also kept the town, a lot of people in compliance with the composting that came out of the law a couple of years ago. We're doing, uh, not that many people, maybe 25 or 30 people a week, until we could pick up and--
And some businesses?
Yep, some businesses, yep.
And Triple T Trucking and Good Enough have developed fairly substantial food waste collection businesses. And, um, anyway, so we're expanding our facility. That's really the new big project. We're going to invest at least half a million dollars to get a larger capacity permit. And I don't want to go into the fiasco of the state regulations, but they are-- sorry, John. No, we're working through it. But basically, um, we hope to be able to serve Joe's future business and the other haulers and the transfer stations the towns have. Every town has to have drop off of food waste if you have a transfer station. You don't have one, I mean, you can use Rocky and Bud. But we, what do we say? How many residents have access stickers?
I think 42 this year. No households?
Small businesses have a lot of stuff, you know, they, they come down. Roofing contractors, they go down. So, I'd open it up to questions.
Do you, uh, the fine work that's being done down there, could you just tell everybody about Brattlegrow and how that works?
Brattlegrow, you like that? Marketing is a tricky, tricky business, you know? But we, we came up with a brand of Brattlegrow compost. And we have, um, we sell, it's, the compost site facility is a profit center for the district. We charge for every ton that comes in and then we sell the product. Right, last year it had a profit of $80,000. Our cardboard revenue was 80,000 or 60 or 80. It varies, it's all over the place now. But we rely on five retail distributors for our compost because we're not set up to have everyone coming in with their pickup trucks and loading a yard here. So, we have, um, and, uh, five distributors that buy almost probably 80% of our product at a very discounted rate. Then they mark it up like 100%. And they do pretty well with it.
And the Allen Brothers came on--
Yeah, Allen Brothers joined us this year.
Yeah.
They have their own compost, but this is actually a better quality than a lot of the farm-based compost. I can go on forever about compost. But it's, what I like to say, it's the only recyclable material that's reused locally. Everything else, you have no idea what it turns into or where it goes. And we went to the Casella MRF. We've taken two trips in the last six months for our board members. And it's very impressive. It's in Westminster, it's in Rutland. And they really do recycle almost everything. They say they do. A lot of people say, oh, they don't. Well, they do. And you've worked with different MRFs?
Yep.
And, but it, right now, as of this month, and there's a monthly fee that Casella sets based on, it's called the average commodity rate. What is cardboard going for? What is, you know, scrap metal? What, and now we're paying, we're paying with our hauling $254 a ton for our single stream recycling. Trash is, with hauling, is about $150 a ton. Over $100 a ton more. It's really, it's upside down. But we don't have a choice in Vermont. A lot of New Hampshire towns just said, forget it. Anyway, so it's, it's tough. It's tough.
Guys, it's interesting though. I wonder if you could take a real brief moment, talk about the pilot program or you talked about the other night, which was, I believe, Coca-Cola or Pepsi? And--
Well, okay. We were approached by a venture capital firm out of New York City. Some people know about venture capital in New York, you know? And they have been retained by some large multinational corporations like Pepsi and Procter and Gamble to help develop the biodegradable packaging. They're getting slammed all over the world because all their packaging, it's not recyclable, all that film plastic, all that bubble, you know, packaging. So, they're really, it's a huge industry, biodegradable products like bags and cutlery and bowls. I mean, it's a multi-billion dollar industry. And the U.S. has embraced it. International Paper, Cargo, I mean, there's all these huge companies, Wendy's Corporations, they, they all want to be green. And, um, so anyways, they approached us, this venture capital firm, and said, hey, if we pay you $10,000, can we bring in, our consultants would bring in some little bags, biodegradable stuff, and you put them in your piles and you just do your temperature monitoring and, right, and then we'll take pictures of them and document the degradation to prove that Pepsi's whatever works. No-brainer. Yeah, so we just started that. But it, actually, we had to go through a due diligence that we had proper management techniques, permitting, monitoring. So, it was kind of a affirmation of quality of operation we have here. You know, it meets this pretty high standard. So, um-- See, Kevin's paying attention at this point, isn't he?
It's fascinating to watch it grow and all the excellent work you guys have done. It really is.
Well, I've tested quite a few, I'm saying me, I'm pretty much the person who runs the compost site, quite a few products for companies and I charge a fee. And I know how to do it. And I, I could have done it, but, you know, it's just extra work. So, um, but yeah, anyone here, and I put it in my letter, is welcome to visit our site, even if you're just in town by yourself and want to stop in for a half hour. I'd be glad to, me or John--
We love to do show and tell, yes.
You guys are a frat?
Yeah, up on Old Ferry Road behind CNN.
Other old numbers?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
The other, the other really big revenue stream for us is our solar array. And when I started in 2011, within like a year, solar companies were knocking on the door saying, you've got this 25-acre landfill. Can we put a solar array there? And Vermont had a, it's all regulated, it's called Group Net Metering Policy, that set a limit of 500 KW, kilowatt hours for our group net meter project. That's pretty small. And to go through all the permitting and everything, I looked into it, I was like, it's not really worth it. We might get paid seven grand a year to lease just, you know, two acres. So, I just, and my board agreed, we're not going to go through all that. But some legislators and some people in the Town of Brattleboro Select Board convinced the state legislature to pass a special bill called Act 99 in 2015 that literally opened up the door for a five-megawatt group net metered solar array on a landfill in Wyndham County. And it passed. Suddenly, we had an economically viable project. And so, we took it on and it was a lot of work. It was a huge amount of work. But now, it's in, it started energized in 2018. So, we have four years of operation. We get $120,000 a year lease for 20 years. The landfill was like, we couldn't do anything with it. We had to pay to mow it. And then we get 50% of renewable energy credits. And we negotiated that. It was a big stickler and then negotiators, but we stuck to it. This year, it's about $140,000, just our share of renewable energy credits. That's a commodity, you know, it could go way down or-- So, quarter million dollars a year. Our annual budget, as we've shown, is about 1.2 million. It's significant. So, and we really don't have to do much.
And the landfill, prior to having the solar array on it, was one of the first ever to capture the methane gas and run it through turbines and sell that to the grid, that electricity deck to the grid.
In the, in the early eighties.
In the early eighties, Stub Thomas.
Some of you probably knew Stub Thomas.
Yeah, well, the methane generation is a bell curve and we're at the bottom now.
Oh.
So, we've been flaring it off for--
We closed the generator.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Took it off. And now I'm gonna, we're gonna try to abandon the flares. It doesn't even run. And there's piping all over, interferes with mowing and so--
But it was cutting edge. And so, the landfill's been producing electricity for decades now.
Yep. But it was closed in 93 or 95, well, over. And so, whatever organics was percolating up in methane has just dwindled. So, um, and the other thing is the solar company took over responsibility for mowing and annual engineering inspections. And that saved us another 10 grand a year. Almost, no, 20 grand a year. So, it's been a totally successful project. And we also have, just so you know, financially, we have a state-required closure bond. When you close a landfill, you put money in, set it aside in an escrow to, in case there's a catastrophic failure or something. And we only have nine years left on that. And we have over $600,000 in that fund. And our annual burn rate on maintenance and everything is like 15 grand a year. So, we're gonna, in nine years, have a nice surplus. We also borrow internally against that sometimes. You know, just borrow it from the account so we don't have to go out on the market for paying interest, et cetera. We have, we have a really good financial manager, Vicki Hayes. She's our office manager too. Comes out of banking and semi-retired superperson.
I saw on the hazardous waste disposal that in 2018, there was a one-day event held in Westminster. How would we go about getting another one of those at some point?
You request? And actually, um, our, in our minds, we were hoping for, uh, July of '24 that Westminster would be interested in hosting because I think it's time to get up here. This year, we did Wilmington and kind of hit the western end. And so, Westminster would be a great location for another one. We do one a year or one every other year because they're much more expensive than our, than our weekly depot.
That would cost us at least eight to 10 grand for one day.
Okay.
No matter how many, well--
Yeah.
There's a fixed fee.
Yeah, yeah.
But we actually, Westminster, I think, would be a great location. We, we did Wilmington. We also have a relationship with the Bennington County District. And we've been doing one in Reedsboro, but just for Reedsboro residents. So, if you think you'd like us to do it in Westminster, send, send us an email.
We used to do it at least once a year. And that was a, we would just tell people to hang on to it and go down there and do it once a year. And that was--
Well, what's great--
I was gonna ask the same question, and the people still ask, but they can drive down to Brattleboro and now--
Right, every week we're open.
It's 10 bucks, they show up, no matter. Bring 10 gallons of whatever and load up their trunk and bring it down.
Do you have to prove your, from Westminster?
We don't even ask.
It's the honor system. We just ask what town you from.
Flat fee for whatever quantity we sell?
Yeah, yeah. The cost is about $17 per car on average. But we only charge 10 because we don't want people to be throwing that in the regular trash. We want them, we want them to know that there is a cost to handling hazardous waste, but not to have to bury the whole brunt of it. So, that's another perk of--
And anytime, any day that you're open, you can--
We, well, that's, we call it the depot. And that's open for a few hours every week. We've been doing it Thursday mornings and some Saturdays.
Okay. So-- Explain what's set up for you.
So, you just, you can check on the website and you can do a web form or give us a call to make an appointment.
Can we eventually get that on our web? So, if somebody from Westminster had that question, they could go to our homepage, they would go down and find that. You know, they'd pay. Next Saturday, I can bring some hazardous batteries down or whatever.
That's a great idea to have it on your website as well.
Yeah, we'd be the first place they'd go to if they're Westminster.
John would, John will work with you to make that link.
Yeah, whoever your web person is, I'd be happy.
You know, we had the cost and so anybody would know that, hey, I'm from Westminster, this is where I take it.
Yeah.
So, in the last few years, the state's made paint recycling free. And we are an official paint drop-off area. And so, now residents, and we don't want it to come to the hazardous waste days because the state pays for separate. So, we, paint used to be like 50, 60%. And so, now there's a paint drop-off every day. Six days a week, paint. Six days a week, electronics. Six days a week, there's all sorts of things.
Or some light bulbs.
Yep.
And on that link, if they had a question, they actually, there would be a link that they would ask the question, hey, I have this, can I bring it there?
Like what's appropriate or--
Right, exactly. And it would be actually going back to your webpage.
Yeah, we have a big list on our webpage. Or if they want to pick up the phone and just chat, it's always really useful. Or my email will be on it too, so--
Thank you.
Yeah, good idea.
I will vouch, they have a very good website.
Thank you.
So, we, one of the things we mentioned there is our education programs and business outreach. We, we, we can help any business or school if they want, if they just want to request, how do I handle this? How do I set up a food waste collection? And I've told Joe this, if he has customers that need signage, we'll pay for it, you know, in the, in the restaurant or in the supermarket back room or, um, and he'll come out and do all that. And we'll train employees how to separate.
And get them hooked up with a hauler?
Yep. We don't promote haulers. We just say, here's who's in your area. But I gotta tell you, the hauling industry here is all small, basically family-owned. And it's really unique in Vermont. Joe can tell you that because most of the state is dominated by Casella. They do a great job, nothing at all against them, but, you know--
It's great to have our independent haulers down here.
Probably a lot less personal.
It's, it is a lot less. It actually really is. It's like, you know, who do I call, you know?
You can't get a hold of anyone there. Or you call up Materio and--
He picks up the phone. Bob, I'm coming back from Denver. I'll be back. But anyways, it's fun to meet with you guys and we appreciate the chat.
Thank you very much for coming.
Great info.
And you should come down.
I will.
Oh, I told, I told Kevin, we, the towns can have an alternate, a representative and an alternate. So, if you, Westminster, to my knowledge, hasn't had an alternate in years. But if you wanted to have an alternate, you could do that.
I'd like to make a motion to make Ken Fay, our new Town Manager, the alternate.
That wasn't set up, okay.
Piling it on already. Plus, we'll get him deep, but you're--
Piling it on, getting him to second before he changes his mind and gives the answer.
Motion has been made and seconded to appoint the new Town Manager, Ken Fay, as the alternate representative to Wyndham Solid Waste District. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations.
All right, thanks, folks.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
We're all very much excited.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Fay.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you. All right, we'll, uh, we'll move to unfinished business, Conflict of Interest Policy.
Okay, we are finally at the section which we began back in June. So, everyone will have a bold copy of the new proposal Conflict of Interest for adoption this evening. And this is gonna take about 15 minutes. So, forgive me, I'll try and go as fast as I can. Conflict of Interest Policy. So, this policy, so everyone knows, is pretty much crafted off the adopted policy from September 14th, 2010, which was adopted by the Select Board at that particular time. There have been several additions made. This has been discussed and reviewed again since June or even earlier. Our objective here, and again, whatever the vote will be at the end, is to make sure that certain matters are dealt with a little bit more specifically. Again, it is a policy. It is not a written rule. It is not a law. It is a policy that is to apply to all public officers, employees, and agents of the town to act in a manner that is both ethical and honest and open about conflict of interest. So, I'll get quickly to the additions. Both, every member of the board tonight had both the-- the original adopted September 14th, 2010, so this is the policy, and the December 1st, 2020, to be adopted. Directing your attention to the first paragraph. The exact information comes off the first policy, so for adoption, by legislative body as policy, as a policy, it applies to public officers, that would be us, all employees inside the town, and agents. Agents as defined, which will be on page two, an agent is any person or persons or actors who are engaged in extended contract with the town in perpetuity, covering as some examples, and they're just examples, finance, IT, and any other activities that employ uninterrupted services to the town under contract covering at least 12 months. This obviously excludes contractors and most of the people that do business with the town at or within Westminster. Moving again back to page one, the policy replaces the conflict of interest policy adopted on 9/14/2010, and it covers all conduct moving forward from December 1st, 2022, that's this evening, right now. It is expressed that all signatories today are signing to move this policy forward from today onward, and is established for all future boards to re-sign and agree to whenever the board membership changes in the future. Now, of course, this does not obligate any future board from amending, changing, or scrapping this particular policy by majority vote. Moreover, does it not in any way agree with any party prior to this. What it simply notifies is that this is the party, this is the policy from here on forward, and these are the aspects of that policy. So whatever occurred prior to tonight, that's out. Whatever occurs coming now afterward, that's how the policy will apply to agents, employees, and members of this board. We are a legislative body. We have the authority to conduct this, and it's granted to us under Vermont 24 VSA 229120, which comes off the original policy which was adopted. The purpose of this policy, again, I'll try to be brief, is to ensure that business of this municipality will be conducted in such a way that no public official or employee of the municipality will gain a personal or financial advantage from his or her work for the municipality so that the public trust in municipal officials will be preserved. It is also the intent of this policy to ensure that all decisions made by municipal officials are based on the best interests of the community at large. It is also intended to promote ethical standards of conduct that also shun and refute improper behavior, to include duress, defamation, and any conduct that produces a hostile work environment or interferes with or impedes the best practices of executing all business of the town of Westminster. Directing again the only two additions from the last policy, of which this is almost a carbon copy, page two, defining duress in general. Duress is the intentional use of pressure or threats, violence, constraints, or any other action brought to bear on someone to do something against their will or better judgment. Defamation. Defamation is a conduct with the intent to hurt, damage, the reputation of someone by lingo or slander. Finally, and this was added, to set a standard of conduct to require that all potential conflicts of interest are to be clearly, concisely, and completely disclosed at all times. Moving directly off the policy down to 2000, from the 2014-2010 policy, defining conflict of interest. A direct or indirect personal interest of a public officer, that also includes, I'm gonna double up on there to save time, a direct or indirect financial interest, and this applies according to the original adopted policy. Public officer, employer, agent, his or her spouse, household member, child, stepchild, parent, grandparent, grandchild, sibling, aunt or uncle, brother or sister-in-law, business associate, employee or employee, employ or employee, or given, and the outcome of a court proceeding, application, or any other matter pending before the officer or before the public body in which he or she holds office or is employed or holds agency. Three, a situation where a public officer, employer, or agent has publicly displayed a prejudgment of the merits of a particular quasi-judicial proceeding, this shall never apply to a public officer's employee, excuse me, this shall never apply to a public officer's employee or agent's particular political views or general opinion on a given issue. They have no bearing here. This is not a political forum at all, and never has been. A situation where a public officer, employee, or agent has not disclosed ex parte communication with a party in a quasi-proceeding. Halfway there. Chair?
You good?
Agent duress and defame were all additives. Emergency, official act or action, and quasi-judicial proceeding are subsequently described therein. Article four is disqualification. A public officer shall not participate in any official action if he or she has a conflict of interest in the matter under consideration. All agents, agency, and employees must, in the very least, disclose any potential conflict of interest. A public officer shall not personally or through any member or his or her household, business associate, employer, or employee represent for or negotiate in private capacity on behalf of any person or organization, court proceeding, application, or other matter pending before the public body in which the body, excuse me, in which the officer holds office or is employed. See, in the case of a public officer who isn't a party, the public body which appointed that public officer shall have the authority to order that officer recuse him or herself from that matter. Public officers shall not accept gifts or other offerings for personal gain by virtue of their public office, and they are not available to the pub, when they are not available to public in general. Public officers shall not use resources available in the general public, including but not limited to town staff time, equipment, supplies, or facilities for private gain or personal purposes. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to point that that is word for word off the original policy, no changes were made whatsoever. Article five on disclosure, also, no changes made. A public officer who has reason to believe that he or she has or had, may have a conflict of interest, but believes he or she is able to act fairly, this is a very important part of this, objectively and in the public interest, in spite of the conflict of interest, so prior to participating in the official action on the matter, disclose to the public body at public hearing the matter under consideration, the nature of the potential conflict of interest, and why he or she believes that he or she is able to act in a matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. That's why this is just a big nothing burger. As long as the, the, the disclosure is made, and that person who's in a conflict or a potential conflict of role, honestly, and as this describes, says, hey, I can get the job done, I'm local, let's keep the money local, perfectly fine if everyone agrees. That's no change from what it was. Nevertheless, the person or public body which appointed the public officer retains the author, authority to restore, order that officer recuse himself or herself from the matter subject to applicable law. Last, uh, excuse me, second to last, recusal. Public officer shall recuse him or herself for any matter in which he or she has a conflict of interest pursuant to the following. Several bullets here. Any person, according to the original rule, may request that a member recuse him or herself due to a conflict of interest. Such request shall not constitute a requirement that the member recuse him or herself. A public officer who has recused him or herself from a proceeding shall not sit with the board, deliberate with the board, or participate in that proceeding as a board member in any capacity. If a previously unknown conflict is discovered, the board may take evidence pertaining to the conflict, and if appropriate, adjourn to a short deliberative session to address that conflict. The board may adjourn the proceedings to a time certain, if after a recusal it may not be possible to take action through the concurrence of a majority of this board. The board may then resume proceeding with sufficient members present. In the case of a public officer who is a party, the public body which appointed that public officer shall have the authority to order that officer recuse him or self, subject to applicable law, which are both referenced in here. Finally, and one of the more important ones, what happens when we have conflict? This is enforcement, progressive consequence for failure to follow a conflict of interest procedure. In cases where the conflict of interest procedures in article five have not been followed, the select board may take progressive action to discipline an offending public officer. In the discipline of a public officer, the board shall follow the following steps in order. The chair shall meet informally in private with the public officer to discuss possible conflict of interest violations. Then the board may meet to discuss the conduct of the public officer. Executive session may be used for such discussion in accordance with one Vermontis, Vermont statute annotated 3134. The public officer may request that this meeting occur in public. If appropriate, the board may admonish the offending, uh, the offending public officer in private. If the board decides that further action is warranted, the board may admonish the offending public officer at an open meeting and reflect his action or hered action in the meeting of, in the minutes of the meeting. The public officer shall be given the opportunity to respond to that admonishment. Upon the majority vote, in a majority vote, the board may request that the offending officer resign from the board. The offending officer, however, shall be under no legal obligation to resign even after a majority vote. He or she can be asked to leave in public, but we have absolutely no way of making them leave the board. By majority vote, the select board may also censure the offending officer. Censure shall include either or both a verbal statement placed into the record or in a written statement of censure. For the purpose of this conflict of interest policy, the definition of censure shall be the expression of severe disapproval of someone or something, especially in a formal statement. Lastly, in article eight, exception, the recusal provisions of article six shall, shall not apply if this legislative body of the municipality determines that an emergency exists and that actions of the public body otherwise could not take place in such cases. A public officer has reason to believe he or she has a conflict of interest, shall disclose such conflict, and such conflict of interest is provided in article five. This would be, for some reason and for whatever it is, a return, finally, after a 12-year absence of a conflict of interest policy. A policy shall become effective immediately upon the adoption by the Westminster Select Board on December 1st, 2022. Mr. Chair and everyone else, thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any discussion or questions on this policy?
I think it's ready to go.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt it.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the conflict of interest policy dated December 1st. Any discussion at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most who cares? Do we have, do you have a master?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everyone. We'll move to B, website discussion. Susan, is that you?
I can get on the agenda, but I do want to speak to it.
Sure.
You, Susan Harlow. Thank you for finally taking this up. As you know, we started a couple of years ago trying to update our website, which is difficult to navigate and needs a lot of work. So we've had several people work on it, as you know, we've had some bad luck with people working on it, but I, I believe, not being an IT person, that it's pretty close to being done. So we need, I'd like to have you hire someone who would finish it and also maintain it to a certain degree. And I believe we voted, what, $2,500 maybe, someone would know, in the budget to do that this year, maybe we'll do it next year. So anyway, it's something that really has to happen, is this discussion with the waste management people showed us, that was great. So I had given Ally several nicknames of a couple of people and all those references. I think she was going to, I don't know where she got with that, and that's up to you, but I really encourage you to hire someone to finish that. We really need to improve our communication and our public information in town and not just, well, the website is the most important thing, I think. There is a Facebook page of, which is under my name, that I can make someone in the town an administrator so they can work on it, just let me know. And so there should be someone who would, you know, do some basic stuff with that. We need to have more than just the gazette, which is great, but it only comes out once a month, so, anyway.
I agree. Putney, Putney and Rattler Borough have a very active Facebook page, and they do a very good job, and they seem to have a lot more community engagement.
Yes, and Chuck has the highway department.
And there's a lot of people that?
Yeah.
Are on that.
And I guess that's one, another point I wanted to make, is I think if we have a greater, better communication presence, there'll be more people who want to get involved with the town, volunteer for boards, know what's going on, I think it's a really important thing, so, anyway, thanks for taking this up.
I don't have any issue with the Facebook page part of it. I, I don't have any interest in being, being part of it, so long as the no comments are mandatory, no comment, information only, get it out there.
Yeah.
And I think that's how Chuck's is, and has worked out, I think reasonably well, not speak for him, but.
Right, right. I've not seen any comments on the highway, and I think that's the way we started it.
Correct, and that was the stipulation with it.
Right, right, and I'm all good with that.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
We don't need more drama than necessary.
Right, exactly, yeah.
But it still goes back to, and we've got a terrible one, but it really is, in that thing, because a little bit, yes, we need somebody to help us, but we, none of us can do it, we need to have somebody that's there, so whatever, when we come back and where we hire, we gotta have the staff on board, that this is friendly, this can be used. The other day, when I was trying to find, I couldn't find this, like, for a minute, I had to go back and find the minutes, and I'm going like, how can we not post them next quarter meter, you know? On it, so we, we've got, if the staff said, hey, this is the way we want to go, that would influence my personal, where we should go.
And, I was gonna say, when we talked to the two people who were working on the Facebook page, that was one of the things both of them said, that they would make the webpage easy for the staff to update, or automatically update, or so Kelly or someone could easily put things on the website. I still think you need to have someone, sort of an IT person, who have some hard time.
Maintenance and updates.
Yeah, I don't think it would take very long, and I think you can make the webpage so easy for people, you know, Pauline, whoever, to put stuff on it.
Well, they, Kelly did ask the, our current provider, E Biz Tech Online, about if they were able to help us, and they use the term tweak the website, not necessarily redo the website, and they replied, I mean, without going into all of it, that they could do that, it would depend on what we really wanted to do with it, whether it was a revamp or just an adjustment. I was kind of, well, one, one reason I was bummed with Russ Lazaric, because it really looked great what he did at the firehouse that we saw.
Yeah.
So do we have access, does someone have access to that work?
Yes, I have the login, and the last time I looked, which was a year ago, I could log in and see, and a lot of it is already done, the new basic design is done, and just the information has to be updated, you know, it's like a whole, you know, who's on the board and who's on the commission and how to get ahold of them, and that has to be updated, that's the thing, but the design is done. It's much easier to navigate, but I do have the login, and I'm happy to send it to anybody who wants it.
My hesitation personally with going with an individual person versus, is we've gone that route before.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, with Russ happened, what happened, but with, I can't remember my name, I can't remember the other names. It seems like we just throw money and it doesn't go anywhere, versus a company, a service, that that's what they do.
I, and there's so many, I go on all of them.
Yeah.
Because I'm always, we're the only one that don't have a very good index where you can actually click on and find the select board. Our dictionary is horrible, but I see so many towns, and I can come back to you, at least four or five, they must have the same people, because it's the same layout, and you're going, and this is nice and easy, and, so somebody didn't invent it, it's the town of Woodstock uses this town.
Oh, no.
I don't know why we couldn't at least contact some of those and say, who did you hire to do this?
Right.
Because it's, obviously, it's working, and a lot of these towns are using the same format.
Yeah.
I know Ally had talked to Putney, Rockingham, I don't know, maybe there's a few more, I don't, I don't exactly remember, she was just, she was trying to get feedback back from them.
Right, good, yeah. I told her there was somebody who was interested in working on it, and I said, this is the towns that this person has worked for, so she was gonna check it out, so, yeah.
It's in the works, I guess, at this point, we can table it for the, obviously, I'm not gonna make a decision tonight, but.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. I don't think anybody's against updating it.
Totally has to be, yeah. It has to be so much easier.
It has to be more user-friendly.
Yeah.
Everybody looks for stuff on their home now.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's.
Yeah. So if you find someone, I mean, it's been very difficult. I know when I went looking, people say, no, I don't, I don't do websites, and nobody does that, and I'm thinking, somebody must.
Right.
I'm really good friends with a girl that did the Chester, Vermont website, if you want. I can give you her name.
Yeah, well, that would be whoever, one of you guys.
Not, not Susan.
Well, I'm not officially, you know, so.
But even what we have, it's irritating, is we don't use it. In other words, I went the other day and looked, it's the same select board members that are not on the board.
Yeah, but who's, nobody's, whose job is that to update? Nobody, nobody wants to do it.
That should be very basic and easy to do, though.
I was under the impression that was something Kelly did, but I don't know that, I don't know where I got that, I was just.
She does a few things, but I, it's what she had told me originally was that it was difficult to do, and so that's the whole idea with the new website, is that it's going to be easier for people to put stuff on. That was a, you know, easier to navigate and easier to use for the.
Hundred percent. When you go onto the websites where they make the agenda so easy to find, minutes are harder. Ours, you can find minutes, but you can't find the agenda half the time. You gotta be able to go to the front page and go, hey, I'm thinking about going to the select board meeting, hit agenda, there it is.
Yeah, yeah.
And similar things like with solid waste, being able to have a, a link to.
Yeah.
Different things, you know?
Yeah, and someone does have to keep it up, because it's stuff that's old on there, you know, it's like meetings from months ago, and the list does not look, look good for us, you know, so. Anyway, thanks for getting on.
So do we want, do we, since we have a captive audience here, do we, do we want that contact info for that person?
Yeah.
Who do we want to give it to?
I'd say just from everything you're saying, she's really good about that, like setting it up, so it's really easy for people to use, so.
Who, who do we want to be in charge of that project?
Yeah, because, right.
There's, even if they came back to the select board and said, we went on and we did look at Chester's, we looked at that, that we could, at least as a select board, come back and weigh, the, the one we liked the best is Putney, or it could be Dumber Spinner, and then that at least gives whoever we're going out to hire an, an idea of what we're looking for.
Right.
Because I can't invent it, but I can see it there.
Right, but you also want to look at the one that's been done, the new one.
Yep.
And you might not like it at all, but it's better.
It was, yeah, I thought it was great.
Yeah, and it's, it's almost ready to go, except every day that it isn't done, the stuff, it's more and more outdated, so.
And this becomes an office question, is who in the office is going to do it? I've done stuff with websites before. Once it's set up, they're easy to maintain.
Yeah.
You log in, you edit stuff, it's easy, it's not hard. So somebody in the office needs to step up and say, I will take on this as part of my responsibility.
Yeah.
It could really, I mean.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that, not put more stuff on people, that person should also be in charge of the Facebook page.
That's their job.
Some press releases, I mean, a lot of towns just, you know, send out stuff, you know.
Right.
Town meeting coming up or whatever, you know, it's, it's easy to do, well, I won't say that, but you just need someone.
To do it.
Who's delegated to do it, so. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
While you're there.
Yes.
May I impose one other thing on you?
What?
You came up with a wonderful suggestion about, um, budgeting this year and inviting people who should be there for our in-camera budgeting process.
Right.
Could you just share that thought?
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, I suggested that after you finalize the budget in December or whatever, then you have a meeting to talk about the budget, so anybody from the public who wants to come in and ask questions before town meeting could come in and get their questions answered.
Yes, please.
And, yeah.
So you're saying.
And we had one, not that many people came, but a few people did.
We did it for many years, we called it pre, pre-town meeting.
Yeah, it's not the.
Where we invited in and then we would ask, and there used to be people that did come, and we got less and less people coming. I don't know if maybe we just didn't advertise it enough, or.
Well, there you go, better advertising would be good, I just think it would save, you know, people can still ask at town meeting, but then it's just so much better if you can answer the questions earlier and you know what people are concerned about. So, yeah, I suggest that.
So you're, you're talking after we set the budget.
Yep.
After that, not, not during the whole.
No, I mean, I'm assuming people can come in if they want while you're doing the budget, but this is after you get the budget before town, so you don't just show up at town meeting and people look at the budget and go, wait a minute.
I interpreted it as during the budget, and I was like, that's going to make that so muddy and like.
No, the ideal situation before you were on, we had a pre-town, at that meeting, we actually had the high school here, I mean, the great, the high school or, I mean, Westminster School System, we had the fire department, because these were all categories, and we would all have a little bit, so not only would people come in, they ask questions, they could ask, like, what's going on with the school? It was the only meeting we ever had where we had the select board in, the, the school board in, the fire department, and it would be, there's the potential committee, it was the, it was the representatives and the school board directors.
Oh, that's bigger than.
And it really was good, because in our taxes, it's all about taxes, that's where they're all coming from, and we had a feel that, ooh, the school went up a lot this year, and now you're going to answer questions, you know, how will we work together?
Right. So just instead of town meeting, everybody asking how they're, you know, how that goes, so. Anyway, if you would do that, I think that would be great, sometime in January, I think, that we're.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
Uh, so let's table website discussion at this moment, so we don't lose, lose sight of it, and uh, I think by next meeting, we should have some information from Councilors Uh, we'll move on to C, town meeting verification. We need a motion to verify and, whatever the term is, the date, location, and time for town meeting and for voting. Do we all, yeah, we all have this?
Yeah.
Which was going to return to the high school, uh, be Saturday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-three, Bellisfaldina High School, ten a.m. Tuesday, uh, for the town meeting, for voting would be Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, to elect town officials by Australian ballot, and that will be at the, well, Fire District number three, Groude Avenue, Firehouse, which I think worked out pretty well at the last, uh, time we would. So I would take a motion to, uh, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and set the date of, set on Saturday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-three, for the annual town meeting, and it would be held at the Bellisfaldina High School Auditorium at ten a.m., and that it would follow through on Tuesday, March seventh, for the Australian ballot to be located at the Fire District number three of Groude Avenue.
I will second that.
Uh, motions are made and seconded to hold the town meeting Saturday, March fourth, at the high school, and the voting Tuesday, March seventh, at the firehouse. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? D will be an executive session after the regular meeting. So we'll move on to E, town manager's report.
Um, I'll read a, a little bit of it. Um, the, on eleven twenty-two, Deputy Fisher and Deputy Wilbur stepped into the office to pick up the junk ordinance and ask questions concerning property with junk issue. They created a case number and went to the residents to speak with them. The resident promised to put up a fence in the spring and to try to bring a letter of intent to the town hall for the file, so we can keep track of progress. This has not happened yet. They also stated ongoing issues with their email, and they are hopeful they are rectified. This is the sheriff's. Animal control officer rate will go from seven thousand per year to seventy-two hundred per year. Uh, the meeting with explanation on the funding formula will be on January tenth at eleven o'clock. Looking forward to being back at the BF High School for town meeting Saturday, uh, March fourth at ten a.m. The clerks will hold the local election at the fire station, which will be on Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. She can be found in the treasurer's office for a week or two, then she will be in the lister's office most every day, except when the listers are in. Uh, she is meeting with the listers at some point to talk about zoning permits and the process, as well as their role in the end process. And she concludes it by thanking everyone for the opportunity that she has been given to be interim town, town manager for this great town. Uh, she looks forward to the challenge and her new role at town hall and working with all the fantastic folks there.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Paul?
You know why I'm here.
I think I know why you're here, and I, did you have any?
That's what I mean, before you go to the junk, the report from the, the report from the sheriff, it was about this, this particular junk issue, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, two things, I think that, I hope that the select board recognizes Allison's efforts for everything she's done.
She's done great job.
My issues, she's been on that like a pit bull, trying to get after the sheriff's department to, to spot, do something. However, unless I'm on a, totally out of whack, you know, my, my concern was that I don't want this thing to be dropped with a transition to the new town manager and so forth, um, so I don't want it to fall by the wayside.
I don't see that happening.
The other part of the ordinance, it isn't just a question of putting up an eight-foot fence, they're supposed to be permitted from the town, the way I read it, permitted from the state to operate a salvage yard. If you review the ordinance, I may be out the lunch, but that's not the way I read it. And if that, if those approvals go through, then, then I have to, you know, build an eight-foot fence and it has to be constructed and so forth, you know?
That might be a good question for Larry.
Yeah, it isn't just a question of, yeah, you guys can do business like.
I would question, yeah, zoning, do they actually have a commercial permit, or is that in the residence?
That's the other question I had, I was thinking about, I was going to talk to Ally about it, what's the actual, is it residential zoning? I mean, it's not.
That would be the first thing I would ask, is, is like, you can't make a business where there's residential.
Well, I had a small environmental firm for a while, parked out of my home, and when I did it, I jumped to the town and it was, you know, you're going to put up a sign, how much traffic is going to be there, you know?
You, you can, there's just a process to do that.
But if it's zoning for residential, you gotta go in front of the development real board and plead your case, yeah, to get use of it, and the neighbors all have a chance to come in, object to it.
True.
And you gotta come in with a plan.
I don't know if anybody's been by there recently, but there's, there's no effort, I mean, it's getting worse, it's started better.
Yeah.
Stuff would just pile up.
It very well could be zoned residential commercial, my house is, which I was surprised, but.
I'm not saying it isn't, I just don't know.
It would be like old.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, you'd have to look.
I don't know that, but I, I don't see it falling by the wayside, um, we're going to still.
But I, I know that she said that since the sheriff's department signed a case number to it, then they have to revisit, I don't know how often that takes place, or they're given their.
It's pretty shocking that it took this long just to get a case number.
Yeah, it started in August, and.
We're very sorry.
Based on their last response, I mean, I don't know, it's like, somebody has to dog the sheriff's department to make sure they're doing their thing, I guess.
In the past, that's where we got in trouble, where we just kind of let people, we just had a couple where they were building, what we thought was a garage to park the vehicles, next thing you know, the garage turned into a repair shop, and it was all done out of a home. If we don't stop them right away as far as the zoning, what sense of having zoning, I mean, that's the whole issue, is what you zone for.
My thing was, what's the sense of having the ordinance, if they're not enforcing?
And we could.
You have the case number.
Yeah.
So my request is that you stay on it, Mr. Town Manager. Takes a little bit of the pride of the sheriff's department, obviously, because the.
Not very responsive. All right. Thanks, Ken.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Road Foreman Report, we, Chuck's not here tonight, um, I only had one thing as road commissioner for Road Foreman Report, just to the general public, uh, we have a couple of new employees with the highway guys, and when we do get some snow, it's going to take them a little bit, I think, to learn the route and how to do it effectively, and so it'd be nice to have some patience, and it'll all get done, and it'll get better as we go, so, other than that, I, I don't have anything else for that. All right, so executive session, we're going to go to that, so boards, committees, and commissions. What do you think of that?
Other than the solid waste commission, they obviously were here.
Yep. All right, uh, other business?
Uh, as I said, for the next, for the next meeting, there was a discussion over, which we had, and again, this was going back, this is on an investment policy statement for the town. I think there's some confusion, um, Mr. Chair, over, uh, what is the general fund's obligation, and there have been a lot of unfortunately, attempts, um, to put town funds or the general fund into insecure or commission-based products or other things, which we need to have a firm policy and a vote on and put up front. So I want to bring that, with permission of the board, I'd like to, in the next meeting, bring in an investment policy statement, um, that addresses these issues, so, again, along with the conflict of interest policy, we're not handing our money over to a, a bank and/or a broker-dealer, um, or conduit broker-dealer that is selling us structured notes that are not one-hundred percent either treasury, treasury bill-related products.
All right. We'll add that to the next agenda, and while we're in other business, do we want to continue with policies, updating policies?
Yes, please.
Uh, what would we like to look at for next agenda?
Do we want to do the ethics policy next?
Yes, I'm almost done with that.
Okay.
I just figured I didn't want to overwhelm it, but I'm almost done with the ethics policy as well.
Okay.
Okay, I got this one done.
Doing a good job.
Then we have, we have the personnel policy.
Personnel policy.
Personnel, purchasing policy.
Yep, I got them all.
All right, there you go.
So I guess we'll move to two at a time.
Okay.
The investment policy statement, though, I think it's something we should have a public discussion about, because it seems like some towns are making this very bad decision to, uh, put their money in certain places, and I'm not trying to say any of that, we've, people saw what happened with cryptocurrency and these type of things, and, you know, people that make these policies then can destroy a town's finances, and then they just kind of float away. So, um, you know, there's a lot of good stuff on why that shouldn't happen, and I will send out everyone to, actually, the Vermont, Vermont, State of Vermont has tremendous stuff on investment planning for towns, so I'll send that out to everybody, including town manager and overall personnel. I would also just say one other thing, um, maybe sign for another town with our new manager, maybe sign for another town, excuse me, a team meeting.
Hmm.
What do you mean by?
Our, our informal, informal, how are things in the law, it's going.
Yeah, yeah. You want to give, we probably ought to give it a little bit.
Okay.
Give it a couple of weeks.
Well, yeah, I don't mean like six months, just a week or two or something, yeah.
But the other thing that I brought, you know, discussing, we're, we're getting behind on coming up with a.
Project.
A budget, and I really thought about the idea of splitting into groups, because, I don't know, it just never felt good, you sit here and the town manager comes in and
reads the next section, you go on, and you really don't get that involvement, if we could break up into committees, which we used to do that, we would actually sit down with the highway crew, the lister group, in the office, and we would split up, and I mean, and the town manager would be in every one of them, but basically, when we came back in, we would say, okay, these, this is the highway crew, we work with them, and they, the highway crew would feel better, the town clerk, the town treasurer would feel better, but they actually had a select board there that they're explaining their needs, and we would understand it better than just going to the town manager, and the town manager come back and says, this is what they want. We really don't have a discussion with them, one-on-one, on it.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
To a degree, because I don't know what those are means, I.
No, well, we got a, we got a good group, I mean, for example, you and Kevin did the town clerk, the town treasurer, Jason and I did the highway, he could do the listers with Ally, and, and that would be like three groups.
It's a good idea.
The town manager would be involved with each one, we would have a section come in, the town manager, but it gives them a chance to, one-on-one, to sit there and explain the select board, why they should have something, and we can help them, be more involved with it.
I like the breaking it down, yeah, it's a little more manageable.
When we come back.
And then you have more people that can speak on some of that.
Yeah, and when we come in there, we've already, if it's, for example, the highway discussion, we've already been two of us, along with the town manager, involved with that discussion, we know why they're asking for that.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not saying this is the name, but I just threw some ideas.
Well, we've got quite a town manager when it comes to finance.
Yeah. Thank you.
Looking very much forward to it.
Yeah.
Do you have any input on that idea?
No, it sounds great, you know, going through the budget, and instead of presenting it sort of like fiat, you're working together, you know, and everybody's, you know, there's no surprises.
Also, in the past, I've had complaints back from the staff, well, that's not what we told them we wanted, you know, and you weren't there, well, there'll be a select board at every one of those meetings, that makes, I think will make them feel a team player.
It would definitely eliminate unity.
Yeah.
To a degree.
Yeah.
But I did.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. Do we need to, do we want to figure that out right now, break it up like that now, or?
A day awaits, a day or.
Yeah, we're getting late, I mean, we're.
We're already.
That town report's gonna come up pretty fast, I hate to say it, and, and that, it just makes it a little bit easier even in my end, that I don't have to worry about everything in the town, I don't even have to worry about one section, you know, if you get some support, so, fine with that. I don't even, Jason and I are kind of involved with the highway crew more than the rest, and then Kevin and Katrina have been really involved with the town hall, so I don't want to make a little sense, you know, I mean, if that's what we want to do, that's.
I don't care.
Nathan would take the.
The listers.
Listers with Ally?
With Ally, that would make.
Fine with me.
Yeah.
That sounds like a great idea.
And then.
One day with our.
No, we say, let Ken be the coordinator and contacting them and then contacting us, or we can break up into groups.
This time of year, for myself anyways, I'm fairly local, so if it was during the day, you know, whatever, we can make it work.
Yeah.
Great.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Before we go into executive session, I just had one reminder for the board as a whole, this is a general reminder, that what's discussed in executive session, on an array of topics, it could be, that it stays in executive session. Anything else under other business this time?
I would like to also send you an email verbiage that a lot of the town managers are sending out now, on the bottom, it basically says, if you respond more than three people to this email, that, I can give you the verbiage, but I'm getting on all of them, that, hey, if you tried to respond at all, that you're, that this is certified as a legal warrant meeting, and.
I'm mad at that, I'll admit to that, for sure.
And just so that, as the town manager sends that stuff out, which, in this case, he should be able to do it, just not all of us reply back to all, then we're starting the conversation.
So I'm gonna make a comment, because I've been ticked off, I'll be honest, so you can send an email, and you can reply all to certain things, like, we, we can meet as a group, and have it be an informal meeting, and it's okay. You can do the same thing with certain emails, and I feel like there are discussions that people are being left out of that should be involved, that, things come down the pipe, that it feels like there's not great communication all the time, and I don't know if it's because we're worried about, I understand the open meeting law, I totally get it, but I feel like there's some just general discussion that you can just hit reply all to, and it's fine. And I just.
Would it be helpful if at the next meeting, or possibly or one after that, if Larry came in and went over those?
And I think, yeah, as a whole, as a group, this is generally.
And I'm not saying you can't, I'm just saying, if you, I'll send you the verbiage they put out, it's basically a warning, that if you do, you can do it, but it's now legally binding minutes.
Right.
That, that is gonna be recorded, you see what I'm saying?